Okay, it's seven o'clock as we'll begin the public hearing. Everybody please rise to the platform.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's Wednesday, August 11th, and this is the public hearing for the forum, site plan and special permit review. Sarah?
Uh, so legal notice was sent on, well, the run dates were seven twenty-seven, twenty-one at the Freedom and certified mail was sent out to Alden Butters. And I'm just gonna read the legal notice, but I have to find it, I'm sorry. One second, I'm sorry.
It's okay, could you also take attendance?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No problem.
Cliff Abufo?
Here.
Art Christie?
Here.
Joey Howe?
Here.
John Horn?
There.
Alan Shiner?
Here.
Sam Spada? Vivian Welton?
Yes. Here.
Sam's gonna be here a little late, there's some car trouble. Notice as you write given to the town of Shandaken that the town of Shandaken planning board will hold a site plan review, special permit, public hearing pursuant to section two seven four A and zoning law sections one sixteen dash five oh one and one sixteen dash forty-two as prescribed in district schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken town code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant regarding a site plan review special permit applications submitted by the Orem parcel located at five seventy-five dash finding five Plank Road, Phoenisha, New York, one two four six four, further indicated as SBL twenty-five point one dash two dash thirty point one hundred, located in a residential one point five, three and five zoning district. An application for a special use permit site plan applicable dated January two thousand twenty-one was submitted to the board by the Orem for construction of a new twenty-four room hotel, renovation of the main existing residence into a hotel check-in and lobby, renovation and expansion of the northernmost building into a restaurant, conversion of the third onsite existing building into a staff building, removal of the existing lean to and construction of a yoga room, removal of the existing swimming pool and construction of a new pool and pool pavilion with bathrooms and food and beverage service facilities. In-site renovations that include new roadways, parking, landscaping utilities, stormwater management, septic facilities allowable within the zoning. The public hearing is scheduled for August eleven, two thousand twenty-one at seven P M at the Shandaken Town Hall, seven two zero nine Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York. Do I finish this? That's it?
Okay.
I mean, entries at the front door.
Anyone that would like to speak tonight? Have, do we have a sign-in sheet?
We have a sign-in sheet and I'll grab it and you have to come to the mic so she can hear you on channel twenty-three.
Has everyone seen the sign-in sheet that would like to speak?
Please say it.
Yes. Okay, we'll start out with a representative from Orem if you'd like to come up and kind of just present and give a rough overview for the public.
Zero, Dr. Artic Tech. So, um, we've made some changes to the site plan since the last time we were here. I met with the, uh, the, uh, Ulster County Department of Public Works to talk about the entrances along Plank Road and he had not previously seen the site plan, so I handed a little copy to him. A week or so later, we got together, we made a trip up to the site and, uh, previously we had, we had two entrances, one sort towards the middle of the property, one toward the south of north end of the property and, uh, one of the north end of the property did not have adequate, uh, sight distance. So, it was determined that, and we discussed a lot on how we can solve that, but there was no solution to it. It was either remove it or, or move it.
Does, I'm sorry to interrupt you, does this have, does this match the version we have in our files?
I just sent it a little while ago, today, so we probably don't have it.
Oh, today, okay.
Um, so, um, so then I met with the, uh, the fire chief, Kenny.
Byron.
Kenny Byron. And he hadn't previously seen this either, so I bought a copy with me and, uh, we discussed the, the project and he, he, uh, he was requiring that we have adequate water supply and some hydrants up near our hotel, which is a concern, and that he could get a fire truck to either side of the hotel, not necessarily behind it, but either side in order to fight the fire. So, um, based on that and, um, he asked, he, he said that he had plowed snow up there for about twenty years and, uh, liked the stonework and was wanting to fend it out and just want most of them to stay. So based on my meeting with those two gentlemen, we came back and tried to look at how we could rearrange the roadways so that we get adequate sight distance in both directions and also try to preserve as much of the natural features that are on the site currently. So basically, uh, the new entrance is shifted about ninety feet north of where the current entrance is and we're gonna utilize the existing road but make it wider and on one side we will maintain the trees and the, and the stonework and we'll make it wider and do some more trees and stonework on that side. The sight distance going in a southerly direction is nine hundred and thirty feet and a northerly direction is eight hundred and twenty feet and that's within the, uh, chart on the regulations of, uh, Department of Public Works has for this type of road. Um, so we've, um, we do have, uh, access around the hotel, but, uh, these narrow paths are for golf, uh, for golf court traffic only and the vehicle traffic will be up to the hotel, but the guests will park, uh, the parking area and be brought up to the hotel on the golf cart. Also, the restaurant, the approach road will be widened and they would have adequate parking for the, uh, the restaurant. The, um, the guests in the hotel would be using the, the yoga room and the, and the swimming pool, so we didn't provide, uh, parking for those areas. As it turned out, once I had this all laid out, I realized we're over on the parking by about forty cars, so we can cut this back. What I'd like to do is remove probably twenty or so cars from this parking area, probably fifty or twenty, fifty or so from this parking area, try and move these limits of the parking in, uh, from the two sides of ours to just sort of like, yeah, lessen the impact of the parking. I think that's pretty much it now. I did receive the comments from Ulster County Plank Department by having addressed them just gotten a few days ago and we're really looking to, uh, see if we can get, uh, like a preliminary approval on this concept. We've cut it back in terms of roadways and, and, and other disturbances of the site and trying to reduce as much as possible and keep as much of the natural features of the site as we can. Uh, and once we get sort of like a preliminary, you know, approval on this, then I'll engage, you know, get going on the lighting plan, landscaping plan, uh, septic, water, all the engineering part of it. But this is where we are now with this is, again, the effort was to try to reduce the, the, uh, impact of, of the development and try to maintain as much of the, uh, natural feature, the existing feature that are there on site right now. That's pretty much it.
Could I ask you to turn that around so the people sitting behind you can see it? And maybe you could just point things out briefly so that they would know where the building was.
Where's the existing road now?
Right here.
That's the existing road now?
Yes.
And so you said you moved it ninety?
We're moving it in this direction to increase, uh, sight distance in that in the southerly direction.
So existing road that goes up?
It's right here.
It's right there and you're moving it?
No, we're widening it.
You're widening?
We're moving the lower, we're moving the lower part in this direction. Connecting here.
So the entrance is gonna be in the same place?
No, it's not, it's not ninety feet in this direction, roughly, roughly approximately that, same area. This one?
So the road that goes there now runs along that same line, so that's the new road?
Yes.
Plus, we're gonna ask you, where is the previous existing road?
Right here.
Okay, alright.
So the second road has been, and, uh, do you know where the new entrance to Firelight is gonna be in comparison to your current position?
Say again?
The opposing property to the Firelight entrance?
Oh, they're on the other side there.
Right, and they've proposed moving their entrance from its current location. Do you have any idea where it ends up with this? No idea.
Well, is there any change to the architecture for the design of Oahu twenty-eight Plank? Or is it gonna be the same with?
No, no, we're not touching that, sorry.
Is that gonna be able to handle all the traffic?
My road? Yeah.
Who's not a sign?
Well, I, I believe that.
Hey, we just, let's just let, once you're finished with your overview, we'll open up the public comment.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
Ken, I don't have your signed in. Did you see the sign-in sheet? Mr. Butters?
What?
Did you see the sign-in sheet?
No.
Okay, I just, if you're gonna speak at the public hearing, sorry, I didn't have your signature and address.
Which is basically just a smaller version of that.
So this is the first time you're seeing this with the modifications?
Yes, this is the first time.
Wasn't it sent from ten days before?
No, it's sent from today.
I didn't, it's, it, just now. Just now?
Alright. To answer that one question about Firelight's location, I believe it's closer to Phoenisha. It's not directly across. I'm not sure of the exact distance.
Well, the, the, the proposed road that they're now changing in Orem was gonna be very close to the proposed new entrance to Firelight. It's gonna be very close. Now, it's not gonna be very close, but, uh, they were pretty, um...
Yeah, 'cause they had it straighter.
Yeah, they were gonna move it.
I believe Firelight moved there, moved from the existing Uncle Pete's closer to Phoenisha.
I think it was the other way.
Do I have that backwards?
They're both moving towards each other.
Okay.
It's going backwards.
Alright, um, who's the first person on the list, Sarah?
Anthony, I'm going to say less than that, so if you just come up here, my name is.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you. Sixty-seven Mount Laurel Road.
Yes, I, I am, uh, mostly an attorney, I put my email that way, but I'm speaking as a resident, uh, on Mount Laurel. Obviously, uh, all of us on Mount Laurel have great concerns about this and I'll say that at the outset, uh, and I don't wanna speak, I only wanna speak to one or two issues. First, I'm a little surprised, I was here when the campsite area was, I think in March or February, and this has been pending and I didn't know when I was here that they were planning this together. You've, you've had it for over a year. Had I known that, I might have taken a different position and we probably wouldn't have been so welcome to the Glamping Site, uh, because of the following reason. You now have fifty-two sites in Uncle Pete's coming in. That's fifty-two vehicles at least, in addition to utility vehicles for the campsite, coming in off of Oahu twenty-eight. According to the numbers, and I don't know if it's changed, so forgive me, but of their responses to, I believe, your very good questions, or some of these very good questions, and I thank you for that. They are going to have twenty-seven cars for, for guests, fourteen for employees, a restaurant that seats twenty-five and, uh, or twenty, no, seventy-five seats for twenty-five vehicles, maybe if you get three for, for one car, fourteen for employees perhaps, and additional three for the facilities, that's very interesting, for a total of eighty-three vehicles parking at the main stone. Now, whether you move it ninety feet one way or the other, I count that as over a hundred and fifty vehicles entering and exiting Oahu twenty-eight on a daily basis, pretty much. And I think that that is way too much, as a matter of fact, I know it. That roadway is nine feet wide from white line to double yellow. It's a nine-feet lane, going towards Phoenisha and coming from Phoenisha to Mount Trumper, it's also nine feet. There is no shoulder, there is only one foot of asphalt, much of which is eroded because of the drainage from the mountain every year. We see it. As a matter of fact, in front of the main stone right now and right across from your property, there's a culvert under the roadway that's eroded right now, about two feet into the roadway. The white line is eroded and collapsed. There is no way that that, in my opinion, that that, as a, as a person who drives it regularly, that that person, that that roadway can accommodate that kind of traffic. There is nothing in the character of the area between Mount Trumper and Phoenisha that compares to that. So this is a way beyond the scope of normal usage now. I understand, although I haven't seen it, that, uh, I mean, in their submission, they have said that the road, this roadway can handle it. I submit to you, and I only have one week's notice, that if you have that kind of usage on this roadway, that roadway cannot possibly conform with the Uniform Manual of Traffic Control Devices, which governs localities in this state, state and federal. Uh, in fact, the sight lines and the land widths are clearly inadequate for that area. I would like to have the opportunity to provide you with the traffic engineer statement with regard to this issue. Uh, had I known that this was an issue, I wouldn't have done it. So what I'm asking, and I, and you folks do a great job, and great surface stuff, you really do, uh, and I appreciate that, but I really think that roadway has pedestrians on it without a shoulder, bicyclists on it without a shoulder. It, it's got a fifty mile an hour speed limit, around the curb it's forty before you hit Phoenisha. What are we doing? We cannot have this. It is a danger, so much so, I believe Ulster County is responsible. I will be writing a letter, putting them on notice that they're out of compliance and this is poor usage and poor traffic design in my humble opinion. And, uh, I'm gonna put them on notice by certified mail, 'cause what I, I have no expertise in land use planning and all that stuff, but I do, I am a litigator and I do sue municipalities for failure to design traffic properly. This cannot conform, I guarantee it. That's my opinion and I wanna point out that in your purposes on the subdivision E of what sixteen dash three, it is your sworn purpose to promote beneficial traffic circulation throughout the town, having particular regard to the avoidance of congestion in the streets of a provision of safe and convenient traffic movement. I believe that if this plan goes forward with this type of congestion, you are not following this directive alone. This is your own planning board rule, I believe. Uh, number two, as a resident, what are you doing to us? The camping area right across our street, this now right next to us in a adjoining property, we have a gun club shooting on the weekends, we have noise from Route twenty-eight, now we're gonna have a wedding destination? Please, clearly it's a wedding destination, I understand that they wanna do it, it's a beautiful piece of property. And we have the glamp routes, our glamping routes coming, and we have skateboarders on our road that we chase all the time, 'cause we don't wanna bother you folks, and the police here. We have bicyclists, hikers on the roadway, and we go from across on a hundred and forty possible. I think that it is a insane proposition. I thank you for, for, for the time. Oh, and one more thing. We don't get notice of your determination in writing, they do, and they can appeal it, but we can't. I would appreciate it if there was a way, if I asked them, right, I would, to get written notice so that I can seek whatever relief I think is appropriate.
The meetings are public.
What?
The meetings are open to the public and they're broadcast.
Not the meetings?
And they're public.
We, we only make determinations at meetings.
I have meetings.
We don't, yeah, we don't make rulings in private.
Okay, 'cause we only get thirty days to do anything on it and I just, you know, uh, so I can, with the meetings, when it's done, we'll get some kind of written deal. Thank you, that's it.
Jamie, James Amenta? Sorry.
Andrew Butler. Thank you, Anthony did a really excellent job there, so I have little to add, other than, uh, process-wise, I recognize that in the initial presentation, this was proposed as not yet complete, uh, and I just don't understand if, you know, I would like if someone could address, like, how we could have a public hearing on a incomplete site plan. Uh, seems to me that we're supposed to get notice or so that we can give comments, but, I mean, the change today before you guys even saw it, I don't know, just seems, uh, process-wise a little incorrect.
That's a change that was just made, we had nothing to do with that.
But can, can the hearing close? Like, can, can we commit it's still changing and it's still a living site plan?
Uh, that's something that we're gonna take into consideration.
Where, where do you live on that road?
Uh, slightly towards Phoenisha.
You're on, you're on Old Plank or Mount Laurel?
I'm near the Flare to Firelight, but if I'm, I mean, you know, that's the...
Of course, it's in Florida.
Towards Phoenisha?
Okay.
Towards Phoenisha, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, something garbage, sorry.
That's me, somebody college, with a simple name like Jim and I'm just somebody.
I know, I didn't know it was a chat, I'm so sorry. I just couldn't read it.
You can't read?
No, I'm sorry.
The name is Jim, not somebody college.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Somebody college.
I wasn't sure if it was a chat.
Somebody college paid taxes up there and a lot of it. Somebody college, you got a nice house up there that he built and a couple of people here worked on my house with me. I just wanna know a couple of things. Why everything here is done in so much secret? Why, why do y'all make these deals without letting the people know upfront what's going on that is gonna affect?
Jim, with all due respect, this has been going under review for over a year now at public meetings.
But we ain't heard nothing about it.
And they're, again, they're televised and we don't, we don't reach out to the entire town with everything but the information, some of it's on the website, it's on, uh, Spectrum.
Don't you think the people that live there have a right to know when people come in from out of town with lots of money and they face the mountain? And just like the Uncle Pete's thing over there, you know, that's been a problem for ever. The bands come over there and play loud music, you know, and motorcycles over there and then the motorcycle is getting rude and rowdy and wanting to jump on the people for, for saying something. I just wanna know, why is it so underhanded that these decisions are made in such a small place? And this gentleman said, y'all do a good job, but I don't think so. I think y'all do a lot of things in secret, under the table. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Tom Harvey?
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to address Jim. I know why he feels that way, I certainly don't think you're doing anything on purpose, you're not legally obligated, but this development, this plan has been going on for a year and it's been a moving target. Personally, I think what has happened here is people from out of town came in, they had big plans, big desires, and they didn't do the due diligence that they should have done. And they bought in and now they've got a mess on their hands. And what they're doing is they're trying to make that mess your mess and in turn it's gonna be Peter's mess. Here's what we got. You look at a piece of property, what do you think about when you want to do something? Water, septic, electric, traffic, those types of simple things. I reviewed the plans in the last three days. For water, they say using existing. That's a big problem. You can't use the existing, it's spring water. It's spring water, it's new construction, it is not allowed, wells need to be dug. What do I do now? Do I start picking apart his plan to tell him, hey buddy, follow the law, follow the rules, do it right? I'm not here to educate him, I would be happy to educate you. And ask you a question, I'm telling you, they need to drill a well, they need to tell you where that well is gonna be. Once they tell you that, they're gonna need septic fields. What they've done is they said, we're putting septic fields here and here and we're gonna use existing water. Well, you can't use existing water, so now he's gonna go back to his office and say, ah, darn it, alright, I'll put a well over here and there. And there are thirty other things that are happening. I don't wanna waste your time, I don't wanna pick it apart, but what are we doing here? If they have springboard and new construction, I'm telling you, that's illegal. Do we, now, Jim is sitting back there and is saying, hey, that sounds interesting. And that's what he's talking about not being informed. He doesn't know what's happening. They haven't given you even final plans. They've given you a plan, you keep saying, well, wait, that's not right, that's not right, that's not right. He goes back and comes in, and he said tonight, actually, well, this is where I am now. This is what, that's not your job, it's not my job, it's his job to come up with plans that are within legal scheme, right? And then you guys can decide, hey, it's legal, that's step number one, and two, what's it gonna impact? Do I have to stand up here and pick apart his plan when I already know he can't do it right now? What do you want me to do? I'm telling you, they don't have a source of water. Do I really need to go further than that? Do I really need to go further than that? I'm asking you.
No, what specifically are your other concerns?
Well, this is exactly the road I didn't wanna go down to. There's a spring. The house was sold. The whole pitch was, I've got five thousand gallons of spring water. The Health Sanctuary of Olster County said, no way. New construction, you dig a well. So the second concern is, first concern, where's the well gone? What's the setback? Once you do that, once you tell me where the well is, then you can tell me where your septic field is going. Now, those two problems right there are not minor problems. Those are major problems. You have a spring water all over that place. You have Mr. Lovett over here, sitting there saying to himself, what's gonna happen to my water? Do I have runoff? I have a hydro geologist. What do I tell him? Hey, could you do fifty scenarios right now? I'm not doing that. Tell me what your water plan is. Let me take it to my experts, and I'd be happy to share it with you. It could be fine. I had no idea. I do know this. It's not there. So when you say, what are my other concerns? My other concerns are, we have, what's going on is not right. It's where you got people like Jim saying, I can't figure out what's going on. And, and to be honest with you, I do this all the time. I don't know what they're doing. I don't know what we're doing here. They're, they're saying, oh, we've got a half-finished plan. How do we look? I saw the fire chief before. He says I can do this. Don't come to the board now. Don't do that. Get all your stuff together. Give us notice. The plans I reviewed were not complete. The plans that I have did not have the proper documentation. So when you say, what are your other concerns? How about this? They have no idea what they're doing. That's my major concern. They don't have water. They don't have septic. They don't have any of that. Do I really need to go down to plant and lighting? I don't think so. Do you have any questions for me?
Where do you live?
Well, I represent one seventy-one, Mount Laurel Road, up top.
Now, how far away is Mount Laurel Mountain Road? Is it?
Well, it depends on where, obviously, but.
I mean, the entrance.
I'm sorry?
The entrance.
Two hundred feet.
Towards where? Towards?
Closer to the fence line of the property, but two hundred feet towards Phoenisha.
Okay.
And it bends around, excuse me though. The property bends around, the road, Mount Laurel Road bends around back at various points. This is a, this is a problem. They've had developments like this, where a planning board relies on the developer's architect, right? We're gonna listen to him. And then what happens is, they start, and Lovett and other neighbors, their wells go dry. Their water turns brown. They start to have all sorts of problems. I'm not for this project, I'm not against this project. What I am is to make sure whatever they do is done carefully. It doesn't seem that's been happening here. So, at best, hold the meeting open, let them submit final plans. Give us notice, let us review it, and we'll come back. I mean, I don't, it sounds very straightforward, but.
What are the name of the people that you're representing?
Yermin.
And do they abut the property, the project?
When you say abut the property, the property?
Are they up against it, the law?
They are, in an area, again, when the property, when the development first started, and there were issues with the snakes and all of that nonsense, that was the area. However, I can see that it has, the scope of work has been tremendously reduced.
Yes.
I appreciate that. But the problem is, that is the problem, is the plan keeps changing. Lock in a plan, say, this is what I plan to do, and then let us review it. Maybe it'll be the best project in the world. Maybe Jim will be happy with it. Maybe Ken's property will be fine. But we can't even tell that. And, and if we can't tell that, not talking to other professionals, how are you people gonna decide that? You can't. It's not better you. You all give your time, and I appreciate it. Again, I just think this is premature. Any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Robert Holstein?
I am Robert Holstein, on sixteen Mount Laurel Road. I would just like to say that Jim abuts the property. He should've been notified last year. You say this started last year, he never received the letter. And I know that, because every time he does, he comes to me, I'm his neighbor. So he was never informed last year. So this may have been going on, but he wasn't informed, personally. Now, besides my concerns about the noise and the roadway situation, as was pointed out, that it's very narrow, and, uh, just, this will mo, I've been living there for thirty-two years. This will most certainly change the character of the neighborhood. And as far as the water concerns are, if they're just going to use the spring, Casco Mountain Spring Flow is typically very seasonal, often exhibiting a wide range of flow, commonly to very small discharges during dry periods and droughts. And no empirical measurements were provided that would document the range of the spring flow seasonally. They were providing no documentation of spring yield, and the spring's ability to meet the project demand. And what little I got to see, they're gonna use something like seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight gallons a day. They talk about two tanks that hold seven thousand. Aren't they supposed to have twice the demand available in case one goes bad? There's, there's nothing for that. And if they're going to dig wells, then there needs to be, as I say, empirical data. They're gonna need to indicate the number of wells, well logs, the documented depth, bedrock geology, intervals of water-bearing fractures. The DEC, the Department of Health, they're gonna have to approve aquifer. There's a whole lot that's gonna need to be done. So I would ask that you hold judgment today for all these reasons. And what Mr. Harvey said as well, the outstanding water supply issues, the outstanding sewage issues. We just want it done right. Because if this gets approved, without, and if, if I'm not mistaken, they're still waiting on approval from the Department of Health, and the DAP, and the DEC. Why don't we get those approvals before you approve it? What's, what's the point in preapproving? Let's see if it's worthy of that. That's all we're pretty much asking.
Kathy Nolan?
No, no.
Go, go, go. Hi, everybody. Um, I live in Mount Trumper, and I was contacted by people who were concerned about their wells if this development went forward as it's proposed. In trying to review it and in asking for colleagues to review it with me, there's not enough information that I can find to look at the water supply system in particular. And it would be very helpful if the applicant would provide all of the materials that are provided to you in a digital format, so those could, that could be circulated to the public. I agree with the position that was put forward, that a spring is not an adequate water source for new development, which I think this would have to count as. And if, even if it were to meet a standard, because some of the buildings preexist, there should be drawings of all the cisterns, how old those are, how the connecting pipes go. Are there gonna be fire suppression sprinklers in this building? There needs to be water calculations that are provided. And I didn't see any of that. If it's there, and I didn't see it, then, you know, if it can be provided, then people can look at it. The, um, spring, if it's not acceptable, will then have to be supplanted by a well. And as was said, the position of that well then could determine where the septic fields go. And wells on this mountain range from a few hundred feet to over fifteen hundred feet. And those are told, are said to me to have marginal flows. So, the drilling of a well should also be done with monitoring of the neighboring wells, to make sure that, that if it's an interconnected aquifer, which is likely, that drawing for this development will not affect those residential wells that have been there for a long time. It is hard to review a project that's changing, and so I would encourage you to keep open the public hearing or commit to doing an additional public hearing when there's a final plan, with all of these elements that have been changing, and with the water supply and the septic really settled in. And the proposal is, seems to be pretty intense for the property. And seems to be calling for additional businesses. The yoga studio, and maybe the concessions at a separate pool, maybe separate businesses. They are not integral, they're not in the same building as the hotel. And as such, I don't think that those are permitted by right, and maybe even by special permit, if they're separate. So I think there's a lot of elements of this that, as you require the applicant to provide more information, would then be good to bring back to the public to look at again. And, uh, so I hope that you will find a way to do that, so that people do feel that they know what is being proposed. I don't know whether it's required for you to look at cumulative impact, but those are, that's the word I would put on the concerns that were being brought, about the campgrounds, the glamping, um, other activities on Pike Road, and this, this new proposal. So, I appreciate, been looking at it for a long time, and the initial proposal changed so much that this looked like maybe it was closing in, but I think there's still these elements. So, thank you.
Ken Lovett? I can't, sorry, I can't hear anything.
So, I own the property directly adjacent to the Maystone Lodge. I'm concerned, by all concern, that we're on board today, but I have a special interest. Number one, I have a recording studio that's been there for twenty-seven years, which means I need some quiet. I don't know what this is gonna do, because when you have restaurants, those type of businesses generally are waiting, waiting-oriented places, just like Mount Trumper Arts did it. They did it across the street, the campground, they have the lock concerts. And I can't be hypocrite, because I'm a musician, and I can't say not to do that. But I do like to sleep once in a while, too. But the bigger issue that I have is the fact, when I moved up in the area in nineteen eighty-one, Mayor ate big, big one. I did my due diligence, went up and down Pike Road, and I asked people in the houses, what effect has so much creep had on their property? And they said, oh, nothing, we've never had a problem here. And you know something, they were a hundred percent correct. However, the problem lies in the mountain behind us. It's like a funnel. I brought with me some photographs, okay? And, um, some of, some of these photographs, well, can you just kind of present them to me? Okay. This is, um, I'm, do I start over here? This is to the right of my recording studio. This is, um, water coming off of that property, like a waterfall onto my property, into that wellhouse. That's my spring house, which was contaminated, was developed, was entered at the wall, so it was in trouble silently, okay? So, when I go to the building department, and I say, 'cause I did subdivisions, major subdivisions in buildings, and when you do a major subdivision, you have, have what they call storm and drain. And that means you can't have water coming on one property to another. It's illegal. Okay? So, the thing is, um, you can obviously see that's happening. And so, um, this is another photo, now, okay? When, during the course of the winter, I, there was, they were cutting trees down, they were doing a lot of preliminary work. And they were doing, there was a test hole up there, what I thought was a test hole, I haven't really seen it. But to me, when you do that, you're testing for septic system, you're getting reading as to whether it's gonna perk. So, anyway, so I thought I'd present this. This is a picture of a grate covering an underground spring that floods my property from the Maystone Lodge. Okay? And it's basically, just a little bit to the left of the area of the photograph, it's sort of.
Sam didn't see that.
Now, this other, this photograph here depicts the excavation for the septic just above where that spring comes out of my property. They can't put a septic in. And when you have twenty-four units, I'm a builder, you gotta have one big septic system. I'm not against the project, I'm just like Mr. Harding said, it's gotta be done right. 'Cause I'm, you know. Now, this is a picture of the CWC putting a three-hundred-and-fifty-foot curtain drain across my property to stop the water coming down into, um, Pike Road. Okay? Because they were getting complaints that water is coming off the mountain.
Where is that?
It's, um, just adjacent.
I know I'm on the same side of the street as this project.
Yes.
He's going behind the hedge.
Actually, this used to be part of the Maystone Lodge, it was subdivided many years ago. Off, I don't know how many years ago, off from that property.
You on the side towards Mount Trumper or?
Oh, Phoenisha.
Towards Mount Trumper.
Okay.
So now I have glamping, okay? And I have this thing here, and I have a group of some of these people. The, I don't, I don't think the road is gonna be, although I don't see the road any wider, but I don't know what the adequacy of that road's gonna be, because this is gonna be extremely busy year-round. So that, um, this is another picture. This is from the Maystone Lodge. I took this in the road in December, as we all know, Christmas Eve, as I was without power. And, uh, and all the rains melted all the snow. That's a picture where it got washed out down to the road up in the Maystone Lodge. There's a tremendous amount of water coming off that mountain, on all the properties, not just that one, mine as well. That's why the three-hundred-and-fifty-foot curtain drain was installed. And so, I say, um, I go up to the, uh, building department, I say, well, let me see these storm and drains. So I looked at the storm and drains, what happened, I see three lines on it. I'm a builder, I've, I've done storms. There's lines all over the place, depicting what the topography of the land is. And I said, well, what did the DAP say about? They, they, I guess, they said to me, there was no comment. My son's one of the head engineers, okay? So I, I don't, as I told other people, I didn't wanna bring him into this, because I don't wanna get him involved in my scheme, but, I know for a fact that they really have to do something other than what these plans show. The water supply, again, my, I have the spring water. It is the best, the best. I was up there cleaning out my spring today, the water is so cold, you can't even keep your hands in there long enough. How sound nice that is. Forty years, that's why I look so young, I've been drinking the spring water. So I might start spottling it, you know? No, I'm kidding. But, um, so, that's basically it, other than the fact, um, that the noise issue, I mean, the building, I'm, I do building too, so I don't know what to say about that. It's hard for me to conduct a recording session and video sessions while all that noise is going on, but, I think it's gonna be far enough up the hill where it shouldn't really bother me that much. So, that's my case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, is there anyone else left on the list?
Oh, I have that one.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, um, oh, yeah, that one. So we, yeah, we received some correspondence, uh, from some people. The pictures? One, uh, received from Hillary Smith. Sarah, would you just mind? One received from Hillary Smith. Sarah, would you just mind summarizing that? It's available for everyone to see. It's just four pages long. I'm not gonna have Sarah read the entire thing.
So it's an email from Hillary Smith, who lives at Fox Hollow Road in the Shandaken. And it's, like you said, it's four pages. The first paragraph, "A special permit sites are incomplete and inadequate and explains the purpose of a public hearing to us. The site plan is focused on planning elements that are necessary to evaluate appropriateness on-site pedestrian safety provisions, parking areas, and traffic circulation. The current plan set may adequately serve as the engineering construction plan, but not adequate as a planning board's site plan set." She has a traffic paragraph about both form and firelight. "We'll be adding new vehicles and traffic to the county road. Connections at the spa, farm, or restaurant are open to the public and not discussed. It would be reasonable to assume that there will be pedestrian traffic between it and Firelight Campground crossing Plink Road in the dark. Look, please, should reflect this." She has a paragraph about emergency services, similar to Firelight. "Is it virtually not accessible via Plink Road and therefore inaccessible due to normal flooding locations?" Then, "To protect the integrity of the things where environmental evaluation secure neck decks of the current plans, the outage propose a formal legally enforceable developmental restriction area." And there's a historical archaeological significance paragraph. "The previous owner has publicly represented the property, includes indicates of Native American presence, use including quarries and stone quarry." I don't know the word. Here, this camera, yes, I like Jim said, I carry. "To the outage and providing information for local travel routes." There's some engineering concerns, water supply, septic systems, retaining walls, and stormwater management plans. And the site planning comments to be considered, questions that should be resolved. And she has six questions, one of them additional special permit, specific standards for hotel and motel development for car and restaurant uses clearly an accessory to the hotel and motel use. "The driveway site distances are not provided for the new Western Most driveway. Here are utility poles and low ride wires in the site entrance areas. According to spectrum, the hub serving this area is already overloaded. The secret neck deck mentions west spaces with dry hydrants that can be used for firefighting. The current plans only show one stormwater basin and no dry hydrant. What kind of fencing will be utilized for garbage area and pool area? More information should be provided. Backup generators are not shown. The plan should detail measures to prevent bears from accessing the trash and recycling. Does the new hotel building have any exterior lighting? What does light uniform transparent red refer to mean, right side of plans near property line? Where are the underground propane tanks?" And then there's a section on parking and loading. "The parking calculation does not match requirements set forth in the zoning law. Parking population uses five existing garage spaces. The plans seem to show twelve-foot wide parking aisle and appropriate parking spaces for Lot A. Does designated loading areas and access thereto is not clear? Will snow storage be? The site plan should demonstrate the parking area to accommodate maneuvering vehicles. There are no landscaping or screen shown as required. Curious pavers should be considered." So when I do the minutes in a situation like this, this will be scanned in, and every month, we're on live on Channel 23 on Spectrum, we have a YouTube channel, and all minutes are posted each month for every public hearing. You can go back to eight, see how long it's been. So the best will be on that as well, so you can read it more thoroughly.
I have a question to all of them. Your operation would be year-round?
I think so. Because, I don't know, I mean, I have interest. There's other people on the team that are communication with us about, I would say, yes, year-round.
Because Firelight alias Uncle Pete's is strictly seasonal, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
So problems of traffic are not twelve months out of the year. But you are, you are.
Year-round.
Year-round.
Cliff, just one other question, in case you already brought it up before now.
Sure.
Do we know the steepness of the driveway? I know they have a stormwater plan, I haven't had a chance to review.
Well, not this new driveway.
This new driveway, right. So the steepness of that would be considered as well?
That was a question we had asked previously, but.
The answer is very steep. I walked against it and there's no way anymore. I just wanna say, what does that mean, it's not seasonal?
The glamping will be, in the winter, there'll be no one there.
So from May to November, I understand glamping, I understand camping, but we have a lot of campsites in the area on both sides of these soles. Well, actually, no. The only one is Uncle Pete's on this side of these soles. But from May to November, you're quadrupling the number of vehicles on that roadway and in campout. I don't know, I mean, really? Is there any place between Mount Trenton Road and Phoenisha that has this type of condensed vehicular traffic? No, not even close. There are how many units on Mountain Laurel Road? And we're the only road. So you're changing the entire character from a vehicular perspective. If you're doing it for seven months of the year, you might as well do it for the whole year.
Are you talking about Route 28?
Talking about old Route 28. I'm talking about the plan. I'm talking about a nine-foot lane wide, going in both, one in each direction, with absolutely no ability to divert, you have no shoulder whatsoever, the guardrail is on the road. A lot of people bike ride and jog that road all the time.
Just for the board's notice, it is a designated bike, look, problem, by the county, and it's also from the Trenton Firepower Road to town, it's also a designated roadway, even though there is no shoulder, it is a designated path.
Can we all walk? Yes, with dogs.
Did I just point something out that I think we all know? In the last eight months, we've lost power eight times.
At least.
No. In July, when we lost power, I asked the young lady from NISAC, you know, it seems like seven times this year. She counted seven, and I said, and I remember going to a hotel on New Year's Eve, so that's eight times in eight months? I can only imagine a venture like this is going to have multiple generators. I'd like to know where on the top do theirs have to go?
I think they do well.
And do they have most of them?
By the way, they say in their submission that Central Hudson is their supplier? That's not true, they're NISAC.
They're NISAC.
They've gotta be NISAC.
They are.
And we have to recognize, spectrum goes out any time the power goes out. You know, you have to recognize, I know we're everything, okay, but we have, I've been here since nineteen ninety-four as a weekend home and a vacation home since I did. But now we're up since March, March of last year because of COVID. The usage of power and spectrum has been, I don't know, ten times, twenty times. And of course, nobody here has jurisdiction over NISAC.
Or Spectrum.
Or Spectrum. Even the governor, or the former one or the new one, has any jurisdiction over that.
I, I'm sorry, are you finished?
No, I just wanna say, the reality is, is that we've become overburdened a little bit, you know, growing up.
I'd just like to kind of recap what the planning process is, the site plan application process. First, an applicant comes here. All of our meetings and workshop meetings are, we have a workshop on the last Wednesday of every month and a meeting on the second Wednesday of every month. The workshops are open to the public and the meetings are open to the public and televised. We are a board of volunteers. We only do this to contribute to our community. We get absolutely nothing for it. It's beyond thankless.
I don't know what to say.
Yes, it makes, yes, it does nothing but make our lives harder. But the applicants come before us and it's our job to review them and determine, as someone said, whether they're legal and whether they're good for the town. It's a long process. This has been under review for a very long time. It's changed a lot, and we had COVID going on during a good bit of it, which only complicated the entire process further. Things weren't, they weren't in person for a while. We were having Zoom meetings like the rest of the world. But they are, things are available, and I'm sorry, some people feel like this has slid in under the radar. That's not the case at all, I assure you. I know letters only go out before the public hearings, that's standard practice. If you want to know what's going on all the time, you have to be at the meetings or watch the meetings all the time. It's a lot, I know, I'm here. But that's, I mean, that is, that is what it is. No one's trying to do anything sneaky and it's a very long process. We hired Ellen, she's a consultant for an engineering firm that the town hired in order to help us review this project because it's larger and more complicated for a lot of the environmental stuff, the seeker review. And a public hearing is your chance to give us your input so we know what the public thinks. The public hearing is not an approval, it is, it is just a chance for the public to weigh in so we can take that into our consideration as to the next steps.
Well, the town has a Facebook page, I don't know if they announced.
Well, they have a website, and we legally, we post it in the paper and on our website and our YouTube channel.
Yeah, but it's never gonna get to everybody.
Yeah, you have to watch.
You can only, to the wire.
The other thing I forgot to bring up, I think it's important, is refuse garbage. While the garbage is produced, I have a personal, I have personal experience with the owner prior to Jose, owner of my property. The guy put a dumpster ten feet from my house. I had two little kids, infestation of rats smell. They didn't, the town did nothing about it. Well, the guy's got a dump of garbage somewhere, and placed it up in my backyard. I wanna see that, that there's some sort of plan for refuse pickup, because one of the problems, it was hard for the trucks to get up to help. So in order for this driveway that's proposed to be good, good enough for trucks to get up and down, usually it's sort of like a winding bed rather than a straight down bed because it's not so sheer. It's lighter, but it's major bit.
Mr. Chairman, may I, can I speak to the public?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Art Christie, and I've been involved in the town for planning and zoning for forty-one years. And I know what the problem is, and I understand it. Jim, I cannot answer your question why you weren't notified, other than if you were to watch the meetings, you would see it. Ken, are you concerned about your problems? Kathy, your problems? And let me just give you a run-through of how the process works. This, to me, is a completely inadequate application. It's terrible. It's terrible. So let me give you reasons why I think so. One sixteen forty-nine in our zoning. Tim, I'm also gonna address what you said as well. "Application for site plan approval. An application for site plan approval shall be made in writing to the planning board and shall be accompanied with four prints of the site plan, which includes information drawn from the following checklist." We actually have a checklist in our law that has to be reviewed before any decisions are made at all, okay? And it answers a lot of your questions, okay? Let's see, before it's, checklist items are determined necessary by the planning board at the time of the sketch plan review. A sketch plan review is a preliminary plan to come in and address what the application's all about and explain to the board what's going on. This checklist normally is all in place when it gets to us, okay? And we just simply go down and we say, yes, it has this, yes, it has that, yes, it has this, and we refer it to the county for approval, and then it comes back. And their recommendation will be recommended, recommended with modification or decline, disprove, okay? So if I'm not gonna bore everybody, I just wanna go through this checklist, please. Title and drawing including the name and address of the applicant and persons responsible for the preparation of the drawing. That should be on the bottom, okay? A north arrow, scale and date. Accurate boundaries of the property plotted to scale. Existing water courses, all your concerns about that. That's number four. Grading and drainage plan showing existing and proposed contours of an appropriate interval to be specified by the planning board at the sketch plan conference with two-foot contour intervals and soil data generally required on the portion of any site proposal or development where general site grades exceed five percent. Kathy, you asked what the grade of the road was. Or there may be success to erosion, flooding, or ponding. Ken, that addresses your question about the water running down into your driveway. Number six, location, proposed height of all buildings. Design location and construction materials of all parking, truck loading areas with access and egress thereto. Location of outdoor storage of equipment and materials, if any. Location, design and construction materials of all existing and proposed site improvements, including drains, culverts, retaining walls and fences. Once again, we wanna know where the water's going after it comes down the mountain. We wanna know where it's coming from as well. Description of methods of sewage disposal and location and design and construction materials of such facilities. When we get to that one, we normally give it to the board to help. What they're gonna do is they're gonna ask the questions that all of you were concerned about. They're gonna make sure that that septic field is within one hundred feet, not any closer than one hundred feet of a well, okay? Description of method of securing water supply and location, design and construction of such facilities. That answers a question about the spring. Location, design and construction materials of all energy distribution facilities, including electric, gas, and solar energy. If the cables are put underground, if it's underground service from NISAC, that will be laid out. Then it'll be sent to NISAC to their engineering department, they will look at it, and they'll approve it, and they'll send it back. And they can also send, you know, changes that they see that they want, okay? Location, size and design of construction materials of all proposed signage. Location and proposed development of all buffer areas, including indicating existing vegetation and cover. Location and design of outdoor lighting facilities, data regarding what appropriate lighting levels both within the site and the site's boundaries. What we're looking for here is, we don't wanna see the whole mountain lit up from Route 28. We live in the Cats Fields, we wanna preserve their beauty. Design of the amount of building area proposed for, Kathy, this one was, for retail sales, office use, or similar commercial activity. Nineteen, detailed landscaping plan and planting schedules, including a number, size, type, and location of all canopy trees and understory trees, shrubs, and ground covers. Number twenty, building elevations. Now we're gonna get actually into the construction. We've been into the infrastructure, the site development. Building elevations and sections at a scale sufficient to delineate clearly the massing and the exterior materials, textures, and colors of all buildings and other sensitive shown, and other structures shown to the site plan. And the last and final one is twenty-one. Other elements integral to the proposed development as considered necessary by the planning board, including the identification of any state and county permits required for the project's execution. I'm a little upset right now tonight that this was handed to me an hour and a half ago, this new site plan. We normally require it ten days before time, and the reason for that is the zoning officer has to review this list and check out that all these things are here, and then we have to do it as well. So I'm not even concerned at looking at this tonight. So I'm not even concerned at looking at this tonight. It's inappropriate and it's not complete. Thank you.
So I don't think we can close the public hearing based on not having enough information. But being that they're still making changes to the site plan, I'm wondering if we could, if we should have a separate public hearing. Like another.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to keep the meeting open.
Yeah, just keep it open.
Just keep it open.
And, and let us review things and before we have another public hearing, know what we're looking at, not the, something that's handed to me, you know, an hour before.
That a motion, need a second?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have to have the regular meeting.
Yeah, that can only be done at the regular meeting.
Okay. So we're just going to keep it open then?
Yes.
And consider further investigation?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that, we're keeping it open, but that concludes the public hearing portion of, of this meeting. Now we're going to transition to our regular meeting. So we'll, now we're opening the regular meeting.
Christopher Boeckel?
Here.
Art Christie?
Here.
Joey Powell?
Here.
John Horn?
Here.
Alan Scheiner?
Here.
Sam Spada?
Here.
Vivian Wilson?
Here.
Okay, in a form of seven members. And Sam was in attendance at the public hearing, which is Mr. Roll call.
Yes.
So did everyone have a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
I'm briefly except the minutes that were written.
I'll second.
I'll favor.
All right.
Yes.
So we have, since we're on Orem, I'll start with the, the Ulster County Planning Boards. We received feedback from them.
Excuse me. Here you go.
Oh.
Sorry, they're just on topic.
They just gave a list of the materials they, they received from us, which was the, the package that we had. And then their recommendations. The Health Department, necessary approvals for wastewater pool and food service from the Health Department, a review of the capacity of any existing facilities to handle the update should also be completed. Visibility, a review of the proposed window treatments for reflectivity and potential off-site visual impact should be completed. Use of low reflective glass is recommended to reduce potential off-site visual impacts. That's a comment I've never seen before. Sustainability, as part of the development of this facility, it is important to adhere to compliance with the New York State Energy Code as part of the review of projects and to incorporate responsiveness to climate change as part of each proposal. As means of taking the opportunity to reduce carbon emissions whenever possible. Use of LED lighting, which is now common practice countywide, can be considered a starting point. Electric vehicle charging stations. The Energy Code is part of the building department's purview. When they, you know, when they design the structure, they'll have to adhere to that. Town and the applicants look at ways the proposal is meeting the New York State Stretch Energy Code and actively seek to reduce the carbon footprint of the facility through the use of alternatives to fossil fuels such as passive solar, geothermal heating, and the use of heat pumps. The Ulster County Planning Board also recommends that the infrastructure necessary to develop electric vehicle charging stations should be provided, giving the goals of the state to reduce automotive emissions. Site details, key site details are lacking from the materials provided and will need to be provided for the Town of Shandaken's planning board review. The details are as follows. Lighting details are lacking. Lighting levels will need to be calculated for the plan with levels not to exceed the, the International Dark Sky Association area recommended illuminance levels. Everything has to be LED and fully shielded. Landscaping plan has not been provided. We'll need a landscaping plan. Pedestrian access, it is unclear from the materials provided how guests and staff will traverse the site. It is unclear if any trails or pathways for guests and staff are attended, intended from the materials provided. Pedestrian access plan will need to be provided. Any trails or pathways should be indicated on the site plan as well as details regarding their surface and width. Signage, signage details have not been provided with the Ulster County Planning Board for review. We need a signage plan. All signage should meet the standards of the zoning statute without the need for variance. Retaining walls, the site plans indicate that multiple retaining walls will be necessary as part of the site plan's redevelopment. Details regarding specifications of these walls is lacking from the materials provided for the board's review. Modifications, details regarding construction materials, heights, and style of retaining wall will need to be provided for the planning board for review. It is also noted that a retaining wall will be necessary immediately adjacent to the proposed hotel, renderings, visual adjacence of what that will appear to look like from the proposed hotel rooms. Emergency response. The project narrative indicates that the site stormwater management basis will be designed as wet basins with dry hydrants to provide an onsite ancillary water source that can be accessed by fire protection officials. Modifications, wet basins and dry hydrants are not indicated on the site plan provided. These will need to be noted on the site plan and further review by the fire district may be necessary since there is a disconnect between the site plan and the project narrative provided. Road and parking lot materials, it is unclear from the materials provided, the type of road surface that will be used for either the upgraded driveways and the proposed and updated parking lots. Required modifications. Details regarding the surface materials for the driveway and parking lots will need to be noted on the site plan. Signed Robert Leibowitz, principal planner. Is that all the correspondence we received for Orem?
No, we have Ellen's comment letter, SLR's comment letter.
Do you mind taking us through that, Ellen?
Sure. So we have received anything new since the last meeting? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I've never received anything new since the last meeting, so it's a reiteration of the last comment letter with two additions. First, to include a timber rattlesnake note on the plan that was in the report about the plans. And then next, to include a, to submit a full set of plans. Plans have been submitted piecemeal. And there were certain plan sheets that didn't need any revision, so then those plan sheets weren't included in the next submission. So what would be helpful and what we requested that a full plan set be submitted, so the planning board, that using the, you are the planning board and the public. Include the landscaping, signage, lighting, details, plans and elevations, the interiors, details of the stuff. We've been asking for you to please keep the planning board updated on all your permit applications. Specifically, the water supply and septic plan studies and plans that you are putting together as you apply to Ulster County Department of Health and DEP. And please note that all of these permits must be obtained before you can receive the final stamp from the planning board chair. Please address all the comments from the Ulster County Department of Planning. Just so the board knows, these are, these comments are recommendations. So it's at your discretion if there's any comments that you don't feel that they should address, or if you feel that they should address all of them, then it's also a discretion. And then also please address the public comment, public hearing comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then one other suggestion that I had was that we could set another public hearing date. Refer to the county again, once we feel that there's a full application package has been submitted. Refer to the county again and as the county suggested, and then set a second hearing date.
Okay. I mean, a lot of their comments are just in regard to just missing information that we knew was missing. The low reflective glass thing, I've never, I've honestly never even heard of low reflective glass. I don't know.
Should we wait?
Wasn't that the, the building up, all the way up on the top?
That's right, we did it with them.
We did it with them.
Hans Gissinger.
Should we wait till we get everything that we want before we set any dates?
Yeah, I would recommend that.
I don't want to set any dates now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be a full application.
Yeah, determine that it's complete first and then set a date.
Yeah. We're going to be in the same boat.
It's hit everybody, really. The water, the water issue, it sounds like, from the emergency response from the fire chief, it sounds like you're working through that. The road and the parking lot materials. I mean, that will be on the site plan. And pedestrian access. Are there going to be walking paths on there for people or are they going to use the, just the parking lots?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's important that we get a topo map of it as well.
Yeah.
You know?
Yes.
I mean, we want to make sure that the grades are in the roads and the water is not going to just cascade down.
And someone brought up propane tanks. I think that should be on the map because that, it's in our code, right?
Yes, it is.
Right. Propane tanks and garbage location.
They show the dumpsters.
Where?
At the end of that part, the curving part a lot that's folded underneath. There you go, at the end.
Oh, I see, it's in yellow.
Were the tanks on one of the old versions?
Propane tanks?
Yeah. I, I remember seeing them somewhere. It's, it's one, it's just, it's changed a lot over time.
Yeah.
My suggestion is that if you can get your hands on the checklist, just go down the whole thing, make sure everything's there.
Has he, has the, have the county recommendations been forwarded to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Would you possibly give the correspondence or the rest of the team also?
Sure.
From SLI?
From the, from the youngers.
We, yes, and, and, but address them back through us.
Oh, yeah, I just needed to.
Yes.
Make sure I cover all the issues.
Yes. Yeah, you just want to see the list of, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I just want to thank the public for their comments and understanding the concerns and the interest of the issues and the public in the debate as well.
Thank you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The amount of power that they might be drawing from NISAC, those are old lines. Would that result in outages or brownouts? Is there a study being done or any way to determine this?
What will happen is when they give us the application, it will go to NISAC's engineering department. And they'll put it together. They, they might have to change transformers or do whatever's necessary to supply the electric.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment to Orem. Like, I know that a lot of these meetings, they tend to feel like the public's always against the project. I would just say that, like, myself personally, coming to, I've at least written in support of projects previously. And some, and I know that you're in a hard spot, I can be the architect. It would be very helpful for the next public hearing, it could be someone from the operations team or from the development team, whoever's in management that can speak to, you know, kind of their plans as to what they're going to be doing on the site. Because a lot of us, you know, while it's important to know what's in the map, we also just want to hear from them and see them and have them say, you know, this is what we're planning and doing, this is, you know, because it kind of, and we know who we can go to, you know, who's going to face, you know.
There are, there are building elevations on file too, if you'd like to see what the structure is going to look like.
Yeah.
Then that and the map are kind of, you know, the whole picture.
I don't.
It's just hard to tell, I mean, I know, like, he's in a tough spot, but like, a lot of times when we ask questions, like, it's just not your job to know, you know what I mean? And it'd be helpful if there was someone here in the job to know what they're going to be doing.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're, we're finished with, with Orem for tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah, what else do we have on the agenda? I'm sorry, I can't find.
Nothing's on the agenda.
Nothing, Orem, okay.
There's another business section if you guys would like to discuss anything.
If you'd like to discuss anything.
I'm talked out.
We were talking about rail explorers. Yeah, if you want to leave it. Do you, do you have anything else to add, Ellen?
No, 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 no.
You're going to dive out the window? Thank you.
You can't buy a dinner here.
It's extortion.
Thank you very much.
Don't buy me dinner.
Thank you, thank you for your.
You're very efficient.
That's right. Thank you for saying so.
I think with a very good meeting, even though it was premature, but it certainly got, got the natives, got the natives out. Now they know what's going on.
I mean, I, I kind of feel like the public hearing should be sooner in the process.
Yes.
So the public can, can weigh in. Good night, Ellen, thank you.
So I have a question for the, for the other members of the board. Should we seriously think about requesting the applicants to put everything in PDF form?
We're kind of, the world is getting to that point.
Yeah.
I think we should, this is the 21st century, we don't even have a video display in here.
I know.
It'd be really good to be able to view something on my computer and know what the heck is going on beforehand.
Right.
It's 2021.
You have to scan them on, just stop in, Sarah?
No, I beg, I literally beg, like, I'm so sorry, do you mind sending that as a PDF? Because that's my only resource, to get it to a PDF. And it would be great. And then when people from the public, I mean, it's, it's.
They actually have to press a button, you know?
For copying.
We're doing a learning seminar, our next workshop.
Well, I don't know that you can because I think you have people that want to shop with you. It's your, you have to the 15th.
Can you bring an application, a copy of the application in? We can look at some of that stuff, maybe we can make those changes on it, what, what we require, number, because we've talked about like the number of hard copy maps, like, that we don't necessarily need as many as we previously asked for at the meetings.
Electronic copy, everybody would love.
And then electronic, then, you know, it's all, it's easy to pass along and access.
I think that it's important to keep the same amount that you require, like, the four copies. And by, at the end of the lot line, that seems a little excessive, the eight copies.
Yeah.
But it is still important to have hard copies so people can make an appointment and put also PDF.
Yes, yeah.
Because county makes us appear that way. They don't, I mean, they take hard copies, but.
They want PDF.
County was really feeling like.
I remember filing for you by looking at a big flat screen.
Sure.
It would make our, our jobs easier to have it electronic.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to see a screen behind you and a projector so that everybody, including the at-home audience.
Just the screen?
Can see what is, is being discussed.
Sam's club, you can get a really big.
Well, we run, we run through this at every, every public hearing, the applicant speaks to us and then he turns around and the public can't see the map and it's kind of a.
It's dumb. We shouldn't be doing it that way anymore.
Ross has got his back to us the whole time.
But we, we got to get with the dissection.
Dissection, what's that?
We have, we have a screen, yeah. Tina's putting out that we have a screen already. We still have anything to put on it.
So how could we make the live feed from, to Channel 23 fed into a screen?
It's right there.
On those small screens.
Could that be, that could be put to a projector, maybe?
Yeah, or to a television screen, just hook it up.
Get a really big screen.
A big, big flat screen.
It's got Shandaken to spring for like an 85-inch flat screen.
You'll have to go back.
If you get a big screen, you could just send it from your phone to the screen.
Yeah.
And all be receiving a letter in the mail requesting donations.
Screens, remember my cellphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, at some point we had a Zoom meeting on, yeah, being filmed on, yeah.
Buy a cellphone.
On a cell, yeah.
Okay.
Anyway.
Now, am I the only one who couldn't read Hillary Smith's letter?
I could read it.
What do you mean?
What's the?
Email?
Well, on, it came as a PDF, but I tried to.
Oh.
Tried to display it and I got a nasty, uh, error.
Adobe, Adobe sent you an angry.
Maybe that's what she wanted.
She's always very happy.
I have to argue.
It's on topic.
It was a good one.
It's worth reading.
Don't talk about the train thing.
Yeah, I'll have to read that.
Yes.
I don't have my glasses, no. I can't read.
So Joanna something?
Okay.
So you pulled the permit for the rail explorers? And the last ride was supposed to be what time?
Well, okay, I didn't, there is no, there is no permit for the rides. The permit was, I was out of town, so Grace kind of pushed this up, but then I found it. Um, the regular monthly meeting, planning board, May 9, 2018, the application for site plan review was considered, and the action indicated blowout was taken. By resolution of the planning board, it was determined that the erection of three temporary structures on parcel located at Sandy Lower Highway Street is permitted. And therefore, further determined the application site plan will be approved with conditions that the right turn only be implemented to patrons leaving the property. So, in their, in the minutes of the public hearing, they state their times of riding. In their original, like, this is who we are, Catskills, this packet is, is an overview of their company stating that they'll be open seven days in the summer or seasonally. And it says here, I read, um, six rides a day in the summer. But also, this is also in 2018, I wasn't here, there was the county, was approval. Um, there are also, their permit from the county is here and expires this year.
Mm-hmm.
It's a license, but.
The license, sorry. But it doesn't list rides though.
It doesn't list the ride.
But they themselves publicly spoke and said their rides. And then their application, original application, is, um, it's a site plan to return the Phoenisha train to go air to have a parking lot, new shed, ticket office, for operational rail explorers, not posting dates and times. Um, and it was determined on this file, sorry, that, so when we, in our office as admin, we just kind of go through it and it, um, somewhere in here, I should find it, sorry, but it says that it was determined that no special use permit was needed, it was just a site plan application.
Well, it was because the railroad, um, the station there, I forgot his name.
Empire State.
He was the one who was promoting this because it was going to be beneficial to him that they have this opportunity to use the rails or else they'd just be sitting there doing nothing. So, uh, I can't remember his name.
What, what was it, Kathy?
Um, the license with Ulster County, uh, somebody did inquire with me about this when I checked the receipt. It, it lists their operating times at between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, as I recall. I'm pretty sure about the 9:00 PM end time, and I think I'm recalling.
Well, it really shouldn't be that because I had to stop.
We talked about.
Because they crossed it, crossing at night with lamps on their, on their cabs and flashlights, crossing people in the dark on 28. This is not good.
With the flashing light crossbars.
It's still, yeah, but it's still not good. It's not a good idea.
My recollection is we have no jurisdiction over this. This is a license with the county, can't say anything about the rails. We can, I mean, we can offer our opinion, but I think we were just approving buildings on the site.
Right.
My recollection is we, we, we don't have any authority to say how those rails can be, we complained to the county, but that wasn't us.
I mean, it's getting dark earlier and earlier, every day. So, you know.
That's what, that's what happened.
I have a comment on that.
Yeah.
On this schedule online, they proposed that their last run would be 6:30. But recently, unlisted, they had a nine o'clock run on Saturday nights.
That must have been when I saw them.
They agreed to not do that anymore.
Okay.
Complaints to address.
Yes.
Because if the days get darker.
Right.
The last run should be earlier in the day.
How, were any complaints from neighbors?
Yeah, there is complaints that, you know, Rob, yeah, there was complaints in general.
The only complaint I got was from Joanna, I mentioned it to you.
But the people in the back there, where they go through, when they cross over, the people are not complaining over there, that they're passing at nine o'clock at night?
I had Paul went to the office, but he was never submitted a formal complaint.
Oh.
Um, he was also mad about the traffic of the things.
I'm only concerned for the safety of people crossing that road at night. I don't like to cross it during the day, never mind at night.
I mean, all the, all the smaller crossings, there's just people standing there with.
Right.
Flags, yeah.
Which crossing is this?
Going on 28.
But they had the gate hour to come down.
Yeah, I know that, but that's not my point. The point is, what if a tractor trailer is coming down at high speed and he doesn't see that?
What if, what if people behave badly, guys?
They do.
I did actually see someone almost get rear-ended badly there, a, um.
That was who called, he said.
It was a school bus had to stop at the railroad cross.
Even though it's exempt.
It was before it was exempt and then someone almost rear-ended them, swerved into the other lane, like, around me.
I was in school today crossing a rail and a car in front of me happened to be one of those buses and they had to stop at every railroad crossing. We have to obey the rules of the road.
So, what do I do, what would you, what do we do?
Hey, everybody's happy, they're not gonna do it anymore.
They stopped the nine o'clock thing.
I'm good.
What happens when the seasons change?
When the seasons change?
Yeah, they stop that nine o'clock route.
Well, they told Howie they wouldn't do it anymore on Saturday night.
Yeah, they're not doing the nine o'clock one, but they still have it on.
I want to bring up something about that brochure that they gave. If we give approval to a project, we should make every document that they give us to convince us to approve the project part of their folder. We're approving a project, they're coming in and they're saying this, that, and the other thing. And they're giving us pictures of how it's gonna look and it's gonna be great. I would make that part of.
The application.
The application.
Excellent suggestion.
So that it goes along. We're, we're approving the application based on information they're giving us, but it's not in the application, it's in a.
They're presenting something, it should be.
Right. It should be in the, in their application part of, and if you make a PDF of it, if, if, if it's before a public hearing, people should be able to see that.
Not only just the description portion.
Right.
A building permit.
Right.
To describe and show its plans, they should.
Right, exactly.
Right.
And my understanding was that stuff, everything they submitted to us was part of the application package.
Yeah, it sort of was too.
I don't know how it would be exclude, I mean, we have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Why do we have a copy of it if it's not part of their application package?
Received via email, the people received site plan map from Brooks and Brooks, app accepted, public meeting.
Because that's what we base our decisions on.
Application site plan sent to the C V, received via mail, I don't know.
Otherwise, everyone may as well just apply for something easy and then just do whatever they want.
We were pretty hard on them when they came.
We were.
We were, because we weren't happy with that idea.
Well, we did have a verbal assurance from them of what hours they were going to be running. It's just that it wasn't in the permit.
Right.
Because we actually didn't issue them a permit.
Right.
Yeah.
I know we discussed operating at night, I remember.
Yeah.
But that helped convince those to go ahead with it.
Yes, and the neighbors.
It should be part of it, actually.
Right, right.
Or we just pulled the notes.
Um, I, I did watch the video, I read the minutes.
You pulled the minutes.
I read the minutes. Uh, Rob Stanley actually got involved in.
I remember I saw that email.
Just recently, to all of us.
Mm-hmm.
We all got an email saying, here's the minutes.
All right.
Well, I guess things have improved then. And, and then they were going to stop after they'd been, I think they said. Howie, is that still your impression?
No, I think, I think they go week to week from Memorial Day to Wednesday and then four days a week after that.
And then, do they have an end date?
I think it's like after the.
Probably two, I don't.
Yeah.
I think once the leaves fall.
Once the leaves fall off, they have like a.
Yeah, they got one.
A foliage, uh, ride, and, you know, that's it for them.
So I guess October sometime, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the.
And thank you, Howie, I know I complained to you in the post office.
Yeah, in the, in the minutes, it says, we will have four tours a day running at 10, 10, 12, and 2, and 4:00 PM.
See?
Yeah.
10, 12, and 2, and 4.
You're making decisions and that's what you're being told.
Right, but, you know, as the years pass and they forget it, they think, you know, we don't see anything, they just, you know, go ahead and.
But you guys still stay on the board.
I know.
So remember.
That's right, and we remember.
But this was said in front of the complaining neighbors at the hearing.
Yes, because they were very concerned. And I remember telling them that it's unfortunate that we have nothing to say about it, that they would actually have to go to the county.
Yeah.
Those neighbors down the road there, once they cross 28 and go on the other side, there was, you know, yeah, they had to talk to the county, we couldn't do anything about it.
And they did, and there was a man who was no longer there, uh, and I don't know whether his replacement exists yet, but, uh, he was very, uh, good at working with the neighbors and got a fence put up, and that helped.
Oh, that's good.
But that wasn't, the hours weren't an issue then, so they really should be complaining to the county.
Right.
So can you, as a planning board, submit a letter to county asking for them to, uh, giving county your referral? Can you ask county to look at it?
So I can, I can give you a contact person at the county for this is now John Milbrook.
Okay.
And he, um, said that he would be happy to hear from anybody who has concerns or complaints. Uh, that would certainly apply to, you know, the chair of the planning board. Um, and he's got the regular, um, county email address, and I can give you a phone number if you need it. He's one of the deputy county executives, and he picked this up from Chris White. The rail explorers, when they initially presented, did talk about the fact that they'd like to buy additional rail cars if there were sufficient interest in what they were doing, or rail biking cars, and they have done that, and that they would like to extend their hours. So the county's license to them reflects the possibility that they would be successful and need to be running more. Um, but they, the, um, company rail explorers has a commitment to be working with the community and to be a benefit to the community. So I think that this, uh, any concerns like this should go to the company and as well to Ulster County, and that would be John Milbrook at this point.
Now, I understand that there are rubber tired wheels that, that can be purchased.
Yeah.
And that, and that would significantly reduce the noise. And, you know, the noise really is bad when it echoes in that, the area where the rail is.
Yeah.
Uh, but then that's an expense that the company would have to make. And I, I think if we could pressure that to happen, that would, that would help with our neighbors a lot.
I believe the company and the county did try those, um, rubber wheels, and they didn't feel like it was a substantial change in the, in the noise. Um, I know, now live on the rail corridor with a very long stretch. And it's about, um, 90 seconds to two minutes or two and a half for each of their passes. Um, I don't find it troubling myself personally, but I don't have a contained area. The county did require the company to build one fencing at a long stretch where neighbors had complaints. And so if there are additional neighbors that have complaints, there would be the potential to try to do a sound barrier. And to review all this as the possibility comes up for their license going, uh, being renewed.
Okay, yeah.
But you, you didn't actually personally, uh, hear the difference with the wheels, though?
The, I, I wasn't there when they did that test, um, but it's, it's a little bit of a, a clank. Um, it, the rail bikes are not that heavy, so it's not the same as a locomotive clanking. Um, I hear, but I hear it go by, it's kind of a nice sound, um, as I experience it. Um, and it's temporary, it's, you know, two minutes, two and a half minutes max, and then gone. But it comes by and then it goes back by, and if you have six runs a day during the summer, it's additive to somebody who moved there, perhaps hoping for very deep quiet in a, you know, the little cul-de-sac.
Well, I don't think it's so much the noise as when the people came to complain, the, you know, the, uh, the neighbors on that, that rail, that, that road there. It was that they would have no privacy in their yards because these people are constantly going back and forth.
Yeah.
Now, that was the big thing with them. I don't remember the noise being the thing.
Well, they hadn't really experienced it yet, I don't think.
Right.
And it was much more noisy than I can imagine because those wheels really do clackety-clackety.
They clank, yeah, yeah.
You know, so many of them, and.
But I think it was more the privacy issue.
That was.
If they're in the back having a barbecue and like this whole group of people are passing by, you know.
What, did you want to say, Howie?
I tried to book a tour last week, just so I could see what the timeframe was.
You got signed up for next year?
Totally booked.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is an asset.
Yeah.
I mean, the privacy thing, I, I mean, I definitely get it, I wouldn't really want somebody riding through my yard either, but the railroad tracks were always there.
Right.
I mean, it was, it was previously.
It could have been a train, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a little different because now they're going like this, like, I'm like.
It's, it's true, yeah.
And they're putting their outside.
Your barbecue's in their selfie.
And they're all excited and, you know.
And they're, they're outside.
Yeah.
Not in a car.
Right.
Right.
And that's, the fence did help with that. The two neighbors that didn't come and complain, the fence did help.
Did they put the fence up?
Yeah.
The cattle.
Yeah, you did, okay. All right, that's good to know.
All right.
Are we, are we doing anything further, is that?
Do you want to talk about the workshop next, this month?
Yeah, so, um, we have people that we need to speak about, you said, we have people on the agenda?
There's a one hour, yeah. Pop potentially that would like to start with a workshop because it's a project that is a no, what? I don't know, it's preliminary, I guess.
Okay.
And he showed up at the last workshop to be not on the agenda, I explained that we needed to be. And so it had been told him by August 15th that you all would need to know and see his information.
Okay.
So that could happen, and then, um, I think that may be it, I don't know how, right?
Sarah, is he gonna bring paperwork and everything?
He has a survey, I mean, it's, yeah, we all know him, Andy Surbaiter, he's been chair, like. We all know him, all.
We know him.
I don't know though. But so, do you have your workshop? You just need to decide.
Or we're gonna have that training, yeah.
Because the zoning board also is included in that training.
Right.
Jose, is that going to happen, the one that got canceled?
We just rescheduled.
We had an empty workshop, but now we don't anymore.
So we, we were gonna do it on the 25th then, huh?
Have, yeah, that's said, let's potentially put it on the 25th, let's see how it's.
It's two hours, right?
It's two hours, I mean, it's.
So it'll be two hours plus our workshop.
Yeah, if there's more.
Oh, I thought, oh, I see.
Yeah.
You could still do your workshop.
If we were, if we were to do this, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
So make sure our people know what they're agreeing to.
Yeah, up to the 15th to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the 15th, 10 days to set your agenda or whatever.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Is it one, one applicant or one potential applicant? Yeah, I don't know why, I think there was more, but I also, I don't know, I can't remember.
You're not, we'll cover it more.
I also don't understand why there was a digger at the seminar yesterday. I also didn't think why there was a bigger at the seminar yesterday.
So any, anything else, or can we, uh?
No, I made a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Allan?
Allen, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Are you done with this, Joanna?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So, thank. Go, go ahead.
Speaking to public court.
All right, no, no, go ahead. Um, yeah, can we get to Sarah, that'll be great.
Emmy Johnson, Cliff, Emmy Turner.
I was feeling very hurt by that name, that's why I was, I was, I've got a lot of nerve saying that. I just want to mention to Howie that I believe.
You should have that. I see enough changes at the county that, you know.
I like that Marty guy, I know he was like, I'm a therapist, or is that to you, but I mean, you guys just, or, art is totally a thing.
I think it's great to be awesome.
I don't know.
I just checked my email.
They may look at this, because there's already. It may not just. Well, in that case, I mean, that's the most.
It sounds great. Like, is your favorite too, that you have to?
That's what I'm saying, it's all very.
I find it really confusing. You and I thought it was a young, excited, sure enough, we don't.